Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renode?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, keep this nation under your blessing and care. Bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to others. Grant that we may support trustworthy leaders, contribute to wise decisions for the general welfare, and serve you faithfully in our generation and in this place through Jesus Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. Do we have anything from the Administration?
Uh, no, not today.
All right. On our agenda, we have our first item under Correspondence and Organizational Business, to consider March as Meals on Wheels Month. Present a proclamation saying as much. Do we have somebody here to speak on that? We do? Would you like to come on up?
Good morning. My name is Martha Hagudorn-Cross. I'm the Executive Director with Mid-America Nutrition Program, based in Ottawa. March is National March on Meals Month, and it's something that is recognized across our country. In this region of the country, in east-central Kansas, Mid-America Nutrition serves six counties, including Franklin County. And we've reached out to all of the county commissions and our 24, soon-to-be 25 communities that we serve. We're appreciative of the support that Franklin County gives the Meals on Wheels program. Last year, we served a little over 52,000 meals, touching about 500 residents throughout the county. And I'm happy to be here and answer any questions that you might have.
Where's those numbers? Are they going up? They staying about the same? Or are they dropping? Or where do we add all the numbers?
In Franklin County, looking back over the past four years, the numbers rise about 2,000 meals every year. We are shifting from fewer people attending our congregate meal sites to more home deliveries. And that's simply because the people who had been attending the congregate sites are now transitioning to spending a lot more time at home because of illness and frailty.
Um, I don't know if we should read it or not.
That's what we've historically-
Okay, then. All right, then. Start in here. Do you have it in front of you? Would you mind?
Uh, no, I can-
Okay.
Read it.
This will be the proclamation for March, declaring March Meals on Wheels.
Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Whereas Meals on Wheels America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. Whereas the 2017 observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. Whereas Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, in Kansas have served our communities admirably for more than 40 years. And whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in Kansas are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kansas provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the state and help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kansas provide a powerful socialization opportunity for millions of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Kansas deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. And now therefore, we of Franklin County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 2017 as March for Meals Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2017 March for Meals Campaign can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. Dated this first day of March 2017.
Fantastic. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Second item under Correspondence and Organizational Business would be to receive a Community Partners Funding Presentation from the Services for the Elderly. I believe Sharon's here. We'll be doing the majority of our Community Partners Funding Presentations next week, but I understand there's scheduling conflict and wanted to make sure you're able to be here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your accommodating me. This is Don Higdon. He's the Chairman of our Board and has been for many years. And it's somewhat appropriate that we're here at the same day that we're doing the proclamation for March for Meals, because we do, a significant amount of our funding does go to support senior services throughout Franklin County, both to Mid-America Nutrition and to the East-central Kansas Area Agency on Aging. And I think those are itemized there for you on page 12 at the bottom. We are asking for a 7% increase in 2018. Currently, we have, we now have six part-time drivers for Franklin County, and our starting wage is actually minimum wage. None of our drivers are even making $10 an hour, and we believe that we need to move towards increasing our wages across the board. So our budget, if you give us that increase, we will be in January of 2018 doing a cross-the-board $1 per hour increase, so that our starting wage will be 825, and our highest paid driver then will be just at, I think, 1150. We don't have much turnover. We have a tremendous staff that does an excellent job for us. And doing a, I guess, unscientific and informal survey of the area, we are paying our drivers significantly less than any of the surrounding transportation programs. Coffey County, who is similar in size to Franklin County as far as our transportation program, starts their drivers at $13 an hour, and they give them paid time off. We don't have any benefits for our drivers, nor do we expect to be adding any benefits to them. But we do feel like we just need to be addressing our wages and trying to get those up. We did go in 2015, we changed from a donation basis for our transportation services to a fare, and that has increased the amount of fares that we receive. This year, we're anticipating seven, about 17,000. And it shows in 2016-17, which is the year we're actually in, 14,400. And I would be surprised if we are not over that this year too, because we were over that in '15 and '16. We have applied for and did receive word that we have been approved to replace one of our vans next year. And so you can see that reflected there, that we'll be using money from our reserves to pay the 20% that we're required to pay on those replacement vehicles. Do you have any questions for Don or I?
The senior centers, which senior centers do you operate?
We have paid rent on behalf, well, not actually. Well, in order for there to be a nutrition site at each of those communities, we pay rent to those communities. And this last year, Pomona was actually closed for six months, so we didn't have to pay rent during that time. And then, when they reopened, their city council voted that we did not need to pay them rent in order to have a nutrition site there. So we did transfer that money into Mid-America's funding that we provide to them. So while you can see that the site item went down, Mid-America correspondingly is going up in 2018 by the same amount of money.
Is there good attendance at all the senior, the sites?
Uh, you know, that would really be a better question for Martha. I do have some experience with Meals on Wheels, and I know that that is a struggle. Pomona has, they approached us to provide brochures for everybody in Pomona. They're going to go door-to-door, trying to get people to take advantage, take better advantage of the nutrition program. And I know several of the communities are really working on that. Those, that's where their volunteers typically come from, to deliver the meals. And so, you know, it's been an important part of the program to get the meals out to the seniors, is using those senior centers. Well, they're usually community buildings, you know.
On that question, Don can elaborate more on this. I know at Winnesboro, I go up there once in a while and visit, and sometimes go up and eat with them. And it seems to be kind of spotty. Wednesdays, I believe, is the big day, correct, Don? And they have a good crowd, and then the other days drop off a lot. And there are some days that there's only a handful, and then there's, there'll be days, and like I said, Wednesday is normally a pretty big day. Other than that, it's not as good as it could be.
We will run from, like you say, the bad days, maybe six or seven, and the good days, the upper twenties, on the Wednesdays, and birthday day, and that. Another thing, the home deliveries, the meal is important, and I think just the visit is more important, because sometimes that's the only person they see all day, and nobody checks on them. Unfortunately, in the 20 years that I've been delivering, I have found some that have passed away since I was there the day before. And that's never fun.
Questions? Sure. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking us in early.
Brings us to Public Comment. Do we have any under general?
We do. Our first one is Jack Ray.
All right. As everyone knows, the Board's policy regarding public comment is a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The Commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. Public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jack Ray. I live at 722 Olive Street since June. Prior to that, I lived at 2447 Nebraska Road for 23 years. I'm asking that the county may clean out a ditch east of Rantool. I have 100 and some acres down there, and we got about an eighth of a mile. The water, the ditch is filled up, and the water is running back into my field. It needs some attention. That's what I ask for.
All right.
And I talked to Jim a little bit ago and gave him the address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road. My uniform of the day is a smile. Yours is optional. Planning and zoning. It'd be nice if you guys attended the planning and zoning so that you could hear the whole story, and hear it early, and then make your decisions. I went to a sheriff's sale, and the people that was, had an option of offering it for sale, also bought it. It'd be nice if the sheriff would get paid for his time, maybe three or four, five, six percent, so that, to cover his costs and everything. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any more?
Gene Hurt.
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. Mr. Chairman, I can give you some indications of what's going on at Pomona, on the numbers for our nutrition. Since we've opened up, we've had, well, some days, one, the most we've had has been 24, but most days are about two or three. And so, as Sharon said, we're taking upon ourselves, with myself and others, to go around to the towns, or to the addresses, to people. And it's, and it's interesting to find out how many people don't even know it even exists, not even alone, being in Pomona, or not even in here. So that's one of the reasons we've got to do that. I know I was at Pomona, Winnesboro, for many years, and I know their refunds, when I left there and come back into Pomona, is that we had days, we had, for a whole month, we'd get $750 for the whole month, and a couple months, we had a thousand. But we had a lot of people that were paying their, their share out on Meals on Delivery. So, so Winnesboro's doing pretty well. At least, I think they are still. The, and what Don said about being, and that's one other thing on the meals issue, is that when we take those meals to these individuals, you know, just to know that they're okay, and also, a lot of loneliness, because I see it a lot. They're the only people they see pretty well in a day. On public transportation, well, first of all, I go there. The Meals on Wheels are very important, and, and I hope the flyers and stuff will work. But the only way we're going to get that going better is, is to go around to houses. So on public transportation, you all know how I feel about public transportation. I use that service every day. And what they did for me years ago, was because of my surgeries on my feet, I probably would have lost my feet if I didn't have them, because I couldn't drive, I couldn't do anything. And I know there's people come to me and say, "We love that service. Don't lose it." So I think what Sharon said about, on her budget, I think it's proper for those drivers to get that extra dollar an hour for what they do. They've got excellent drivers, they help the people into the van, out of the van, they do everything. And so I think you should really look at that for that, that funding for them, for the drivers. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our Consent Agenda. Items under the Consent Agenda today would include considering approving commission meeting minutes for February 22nd, 2017, claim vouchers, the amount of $175,018.14, tax change orders in a positive amount of $7,597.26, emergency vehicle permits, there are two of those, a payroll for, payroll, the amount of $1,084,411.49. That would be for the period of January 21 through February 20. There are motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I got one quick question. On the vehicle permits today, both the volunteer fire, where are they from?
Cutler.
Okay, that's all. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
First item of business would be to consider authorizing the Chairman to execute the authority to award a contract. Jim will explain the details.
Good morning, Commissioners. KDOT took bids for the slope repair on Idaho between Pawnee and Sand Creek. They opened six bids. A little bidder was Creeky Construction of Melvern, Kansas. KDOT is requesting Franklin County concur with the award of the bid and commit $72,000 to the project by executing the aforementioned form. Be happy to answer any of your questions. This is something that's been ongoing since the rains of the spring of 2015.
This is roughly 30% of, of the total project? Is that right?
Approximately 30% is being paid by KDOT.
Sure.
And there's, there's no FEMA money that was going to pay for any of this that was ever-
FEMA does not pay for repairs on rural secondaries. That's done by Federal Highway Administration. That's why KDOT's handling it, and contributing funds.
Jim, I noticed that the bid was, the little bid was received on two, oh, never mind, I read the, read the date wrong. I thought it was two years old here.
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, or Jim? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve this project?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Concludes our items of business, next would be staff reports.
Yeah, I have just a very brief staff report. And Janet, feel free to spot me on this, you work down there every day, but it's my understanding if the Magna Carta exhibit is not up yet, it is, it is up.
It's ready.
Okay. So certainly, I would encourage you all to go down there and take a look. I will be heading down there myself today, probably. With regard to the other Community Partners Presentations, just to get you all out ahead of it a little bit, they're currently slated for Monday, the 6th, at the study session. And then after that, at that time, we'll disseminate the worksheets to all of you. We'll ask that we have those back by the 15th, and then the actual discussion of those will be had on March 22nd. So just, you might kind of calendar those dates in your head, and, and we'll work through it, so.
All right.
And that's all I have today.
Sheriff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Good morning. I'm going to start with, I appreciate Norm's idea of getting, me getting 6% on all the sales. I would tell you that by statute, the sheriff is the only person that can legally sell property that is not their own without being licensed as a realtor in the state of Kansas. And the fees that are collected on that are set by statute, as well as $15 that we receive, which is to help offset the staff costs and things like that. And then, and those monies go into the general fund, they don't go into the sheriff's fund. But that's kind of where we stand on, on, on the sheriff's sale part. We're going to be having some movement through the sheriff's office. We've talked previously, we were trying to create a work environment where there could be career progression and some movement within the agency, and that's going to be happening at the next, start of the next pay period. We have someone that's going from the road to a supervisor position in the jail, someone from the jail's going to be going to the road. So we're going to have a little bit of movement, and those are going to be positive things for, for the sheriff's office as well. And the last thing I have is that when we, when we moved into the new building, we had had discussion then about our records retention, and the records room and all that, and how we are going to be storing those. And the, there's a push for things to go digital and electronic. So we have started receiving, researching, and had a couple different companies come in to give us bids as to what that will cost to get everything scanned in digital format and to do all that. I'm not prepared at this point to let, to come with those numbers. I'm going to get with the Administrator. I can tell you that everything is well north of six figures. And so there's maybe some other options, and I'll be meeting with, I've already met with the IT Director a little bit on it. We plan to meet a little bit more in-depth to kind of see what our total options may be. And then, once we get that devised, we'd come to you. But I wanted you guys to know that we are moving forward with some of those things that have been mentioned back then, and to research and kind of see where we are and what we need to, what needs to happen for us to get there. So, if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Is there a limit of time on some of those records that you can finally not have them?
Yes, and, but in large part, we just have to keep them. They, they're, they're permanent records. That's where we, that's why we have a storage issue now with the hard copies, and then we could potentially have a storage issue depending on how we choose to do it digitally, with storage capacity. So that's where a lot of the, a lot of the expense comes in. On the sheriff's side, because of our new building and with the records room, we are not physically going to run out of space for several years. It is more difficult to go and pull some of those files and things to research when we have to, since they're not electron, since those are not digital. The place where we are running out of room still is in the jail, and so we, we've been looking for additional storage, record storage rooms for some of those. But again, it's because they, we are not, we can't get rid of them.
So from a time aspect, for your staff, it's more important to digitize the more recent files that are going to be looked at more often than the ones that are 30 or 40 years old, I would assume?
I, I think that would be correct, yes. I, there would, there would need to be a prioritization of that. You are, you're absolutely correct in that. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim? Janet?
Does Midge have something?
Hi, Midge. And Seabine.
Raise my hand, may I speak? I wanted to let you know of a grant that we worked with the city Ottawa Library a year ago on, for an AmeriCorps Vista Volunteer. At that time, I thought it was going to be a joint, joint application with ECAN, the library, and ourselves, to get one Vista Volunteer. The good news is, we were awarded three, one for each of our organizations. And I just wanted to give you a heads- And I just wanted to give you a heads up, that actually, the advertisement to get that AmeriCorps Volunteer will be going out this, this week. We're really excited about that. All three of the individuals that we hope we can find will be working on food and nutrition issues related to poverty. So the one for the Health Department will be focusing on work with the Food Policy Council and looking at, you know, trying to develop more projects to get healthy foods out to the people who need it the most. So somewhat along the same lines as Pomona started the farmer's market, maybe they'll find another distribution means that, that they can work on. The AmeriCorps Volunteers are available for one year. They aren't paid, except they do get a, they aren't paid by us. Through the program, they get a stipend that allows them to have housing. If they have children, they get a small stipend for childcare and a little bit of food, but it actually, actually is just below poverty level what they receive. But in exchange for that service that they provide the community, they do get an education stipend if they want to help, to help them go to college or further their education in some way. If everything's successful, there is the potential that the volunteers could be extended for another two years past the first year. So I just wanted to let you know that we're a great opportunity to get that kind of help and dedicated help to address the poverty in our, our community, and look forward to finding someone either locally or from across the United States.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Janet? Bring us Commissioners' comments and Board reports?
I haven't been to anything since the last meeting.
Last Wednesday night, I went to the Wellsville Police, our city council meeting. The police there made an eight-year-old boy an honorary police officer with a badge number and a replica of a Tahoe police car and so forth. He has cancer, and it was a very moving ceremony and quite impressive, the police force, how they had banded together to make this happen for this young man. They're trying to expand the cemetery, and they found out that the perpetual care funds cannot be used for capital improvements, so they were talking about how they're going to come up with the money to pay for that. They talked about their citywide cleanup dates, and Janet, if you'll help me, the clerk at the city in Wellsville, she would like to have John Hyatt's contact, if you can get that to her. That'd be great. There are citywide cleanup dates and also the construction and demolition stuff to take care of. I talked about requesting a proposal for a construction of a water main, and then they also discussed the cost of putting in some handicap parking spots. And then yesterday, Roy and I attended the Area Agency on Aging meeting. He's on the policy board, I guess, and I'm on the advisory council, a one-year term. So that was a very interesting meeting, and Roy can probably speak a lot to more of what goes on there than, it was a new meeting for me, but it was very informative, and talked about the Mid-American Nutrition as part of that and so forth.
Like Randy said, I'm still learning all the acronyms and abbreviations for that, being on that board, and most, most meeting was discussing the policies and how the, how the change in procedures and policies, documentation and changes into it to update it, and most meeting was taken up doing that. We did talk a little bit about Mid-American Nutrition and their, I guess, contract with them and that thing, we'll learn more about it later.
It was interesting that, like this CDDO, the Community Development Disability Organization, only serves three of the counties, Coffey, Osage, and Franklin, whereas there's still like Lynn County and Anderson, those that are involved. So there's different entities which overlap and don't cover every county and every aspect of it. So it's very complicated in some ways, but it's also very thorough. The people there really impressed me as being highly involved in making sure our aged people are being met their needs.
Do you have anything? No? Attended the hospital meeting. It was largely business as usual. We did get a chance to tour the emergency room addition, which is interesting. On our side of things, there'll be a Sallyport for the ambulance, so they'll have their own entrance, and they'll be able to load and unload in a climate-controlled environment. So that'd be nice for them and the patients. I don't have anything to add, I believe, so that would be it. There'd be a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned 9:05.